Yes, Linda Anderson here. Gibb Backlin, David Becker, Deborah Belcher.
Here.
Rick Cantrell.
Here.
Paul Cross.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Mayor Mayhewide, Howard Wilson.
We do have a quorum. Everyone should have received minutes of the last meeting in your packet. Are there any necessary changes to the minutes, edits, additions, corrections?
There was one change, I think, that has already been made. We were noted that Rick Cantrell was absent and Deborah Belcher was here, and that's been corrected on the minutes.
Great, thank you so much. If not, then the Chair would welcome a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, no further discussion then. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The minutes are approved as written. Thank you, Brenda. Robert, what is the first piece of business that we have today?
Well, Chairman Thompson, we have 512 East Lidle Street. The applicant's name is Michael Westcott. He's requesting to remove the asphalt shingled roofing that he has currently on his house, and he wants to replace it with metal roofing. The location of the house is on the south side of East Lidle Street, one lot east of North Highland. The house was built in 1900 in the four-square style of architecture with a hip roof, broad eaves with a dormer. It's two stories and has brick veneer. The residence is a contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. What he's proposing is to remove the shingled layers on both levels of his house, and he wants to replace them with roofing material that's metal and material that's gray, charcoal gray in color. In your agenda package, I include some photographs of the subject house. In addition, there are some other houses that are noted in the district with metal-type roofing. Some are main structures, some are accessory structures. And the guidelines, they're included in your agenda package also. They address our guidelines on metal roofing. If you have any questions of me or the applicant, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Westcott, would you like to come before the Commission and say a few words?
Um, well.
If you would come to the podium there and speak.
My first time.
State your name and your address, if you would, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Michael Westcott, and my address is 512 East Lidle Street, Murfreesboro, 37130.
Would you like to tell us about your requested change?
My wife and I were looking, we feel we need a new roof at this time, and we felt a metal roof is a nice look. It's probably longer-lasting than asphalt, and we just would like to do something a little bit different and still keep the historic look to it.
What questions? Is there anything else you'd like to add?
It's pretty much it. I mean, it's pretty simple.
Very straightforward, yeah. What questions would the Commission have of the applicant?
We have a photograph of an example of a roofing that you plan to use, and is that talking about the color? And it almost looks like there's a weave to it. Is that a standing seam roof that you plan to use?
I don't understand the term "standing seam."
That weave, I think, is probably the photograph itself, a little bit off.
I think that's just the pixelation.
Yes.
Okay.
But it's the seam roof.
I think the point also that you're making, Linda, is that that is truly the example shown, a standing seam metal roof, whereas some of the other examples are, it appears to be 4V, 5V, and other kinds of metal roofing, and there's certainly a distinct difference in the two, or the different ones. But the example shown to us is on a porch. It is a standing seam metal roof, and that is the one that you intend to use.
That's a good example of what we want to use. I can't visualize anything different than that.
Okay. I know, like, on the church there on East Main, 315, that's a standing seam. On the Ward's house, where they added the garage, that's a standing seam. But some of the other examples are definitely 5V, and that is a more agricultural sort of metal roofing. It's just less expensive, and frankly, in my opinion, it's not as good-looking. I know the house, the bungalow structure, the concrete block next to the market at Tennessee and East Main, that has the red roof. That looks like, almost like, a 4V. It actually has some little intermediate small Vs in between the ribs. And the standing seam is the typical traditional look for that period, and certainly would be my preference. I can't speak for the other members of the Commission. What other questions or comments do you all have?
I think that was my main concern.
Okay.
And, I don't know, you've checked into the roof, but maybe you don't know them. The term that's used for the metal roof you're planning to use.
No, I didn't, not know there was other terms used. I just looked at a photograph, and that's it up that way.
Well, that is a standing seam, so it sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, I've got some comments. I drove through the district just before the meeting and looked at the applicant's home, which is a beautiful home. And I did drive around and look at some of the others in there. And looking at the example that we have included, the one that's the corner of 225 North University, is a similar-style, bungalow-style house with a roof that is not a traditional hip roof, in that the roof breaks at a point and actually curves. It doesn't come straight, on the applicant's house, it doesn't come straight down. It comes to a point and then breaks in a soft curve towards the E. This house at 225 North University does the same thing. I'm pretty sure that roof has been on that house since before historic zoning was enacted, but it's terribly inappropriate for that house. The houses of this period, generally speaking, on this scale, would not have had a standing seam roof. They would have had a slate roof, composition, shingle roof, a metal, stamped metal, tin roof. This kind of, this roofing system really, it works fine on a house with a, with a, just a standard eight-and-twelve slope, such as 10-10 East Lidle, 514 East Main. Again, you've got a standard slope going to the valley. I'm not sure what was going on with 512, or this is marked 512 East Lidle Street, but I don't believe, I think 512 is the address of the applicant, is it not?
It is my address.
Okay, that one is just labeled wrong. Even the one at 1150 that has the Kentucky Fried Chicken roof on it is, at least the roof lines are, they're linear. The applicant's house, if you look at that, you will see that it comes down. I don't think that a standing seam metal roof, that that is a, from a technical point of view, I don't think that's a good application of a standing seam metal roof. Just purely as a person who would be concerned with the maintenance and upkeep of the house, not to mention the way that it's going to look, either they're going to have to take that curve out of that, or they're going to have to make a break at the point, and you're going to have an extra seam there that's not going to look right. And I, so, for that reason, I can think of a lot of shingle types, asphalt-type shingles that would, certainly, I don't think would cost any more than the metal roof, and would be much better-looking. Now, with regard to the roof, I don't know exactly what the slope is on the roof on the porch. Without knowing that, I'm not sure how that would work, but I think a standing seam roof on this house is a mistake, for technical reasons as well as aesthetic.
Certainly on the flat roof of the porch, it's so flat, you wouldn't get a manufacturer's warranty for an installation of a metal roof. More than likely.
I'm assuming it has some slope, but I have no idea.
Yeah, probably very minimal, which would probably be not enough.
Have you already contracted with a roofing company or gotten the difference in your bids for the metal versus the shingles? Or is that why you're leaning towards the metal, or just the look in your mind?
Well, my wife felt it would be something nicer than the regular asphalt roofing, and it is, it is higher in price, but the look of it, she thought it would have been a good look for the home.
Now that Mr. Cross has pointed out that, you know, how we have two different slopes on that main roof, I hadn't thought about that before, but that will be a very noticeable line definition, which I think will not be attractive.
What I was told by the contractor, that there is a slight curve to the house, very slight, not a lot, that a line from top to bottom would be one straight line, without a slight curve in it. Would not change the frame or structure of it, just change the slope to maybe a little bit straighter like that.
Well, I was thinking that that would be the only way that you could install a roof like that, which will modify the appearance of the house away from the original architecture. It was designed with that curve in it. And that's going to change the relationship of the dormer as well. And the visual relationship, if they raise that, the dormer's not going to appear as it would. I was thinking about a shingle, not unlike the shingle that David and Julie Becker put on their house, which is, is a, it's an expensive, I know it's an expensive shingle. I don't know what it cost them. I just, it is an imitation slate shingle, but there really aren't that many squares there. But I mean, that's the type or look that I think that we, that the historic zone should try to maintain. I just don't think that that type of roof is right for this house.
In addition to that, the asphalt shingle roofs, I think the ones of the Beckers is a irregular shape slate roof, asphalt shingle. Being that that lower slope of that high roof is flatter, I still wonder, would you get a warranty on the roof being that flat with an asphalt shingle?
Asphalt shingles probably couldn't go on that front roof there, the regular flat with the little flats. The wind, you'd have a wind problem. There's not much of a slope in the front of the house on the lower level.
On the porch roof or the lower level of the high roof?
On the porch roof.
What's on the porch roof now?
It's rolled roofing.
I don't have a particular problem with a standing seam roof on that. If they were warranted, then I wouldn't have a, I have no objection to that. I just object to it on the roof proper.
And the other thing about asphalt shingles is that there are so many wonderful designs and shades nowadays. So, I don't know if you've looked into that, but I think it certainly would be worth investigating.
I'm familiar with the Becker's home as well, and the shingles on that, and it's very nice. So I'll talk to them about it, see where they actually purchase theirs, and I'll get some information from them.
In addition to this roofing work, do you intend to place the gutters and downspouts typically that goes hand-in-hand? Or often it does, I should say.
It wasn't an intention, but we haven't discussed it yet at this point in time.
I'm not asking that you do it, but sometimes it's part of a roofing job, and I just wanted to know if it was, if I wanted us to be aware of it. You don't intend to do it at this time?
Well, I haven't discussed it with my wife yet.
Okay. What further questions does the Commission have? Is there a motion?
I would move for denial based on the inappropriateness of the standing seam roof.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to, what about on the porch? You mentioned that would be.
I am, the motion can stipulate that the standing seam roof is.
On the high roof.
Is the denials for the high roof, yes.
And the dormer.
Right.
And then he would encourage, and then I guess what they're saying is they'd encourage you to come back with, look at that material that's been discussed on the Becker House and other locations, with the concern being that valley through there, and then raising that valley up.
I guess the question I have, should we defer acting on this altogether and have a full package presented back to us instead of piecemeal? We approve just the porch roof, and then they come back later for the high roof? Should we get a full package? I'd also question, should we get samples to look at? Is the house currently leaking?
There is a slight leak that we have, but it's, actually, I fixed it with some tar on top, so it's been taken care of.
It's manageable.
Yeah.
Would you consider modifying your motion, or would you want to stick by it?
No, I would be, if the Commission would prefer to defer, then that's fine with me as well.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
With our recommendation that you come back with something for the upper roof that's not standing seam, that it's not essentially a metal roof.
Well, if he decides to replace asphalt shingles, which these are, and no change, that would necessarily have to come back for the Commission. That's a good point. You're correct. So he's just going to take asphalt shingles off and replace with the same kind, then that would be something that we could do administratively.
Even if we went with a standard three-tab to an architectural shingle, that would be something you could handle administratively?
That's, I believe that's what this is.
It looks like a three-tab roof.
It's not architectural. I think it's a three-tab.
Yeah.
And.
I wouldn't have a problem if that were the case.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you would have a problem?
I wouldn't have a problem.
No, I would not, I would assume that he could replace it with what's existing.
Yeah. With either asphalt shingles or roll roofing on the porch, because, like I say, it's such a flat roof. I don't know how asphalt shingles would hold up on a flat roof like that.
Well, if we could go back to your original motion, just doing metal roof, approving metal roof for the porch. If he wants to stay with asphalt shingles for the high roof, then he's good to go.
That's my motion.
And we have a second, I believe?
Yes.
Do you understand that part of it? Okay.
Is there any further discussion?
I would like to say that I feel like that perhaps we should offer some suggestions, and I will try to pull together some recommendations and get them to Robert, to forward to the applicant for consideration. I hate to say, no, you can't do this, and now go figure it out on your own. I think we ought to offer such help as we reasonably can, and I'll be happy to do that research and get the information to you to be forwarded.
Okay. Could you repeat the motion so we can get it all straight? At least I can get it straight.
The motion is to deny the application with regard to the standing seam metal roof on the upper roof in Dormer, but to approve the use of standing seam metal roof on the front porch.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to deny the metal roof on the high roof in Dormer, but to allow the metal roofing on the porch roof, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Then the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Robert, what is our next piece of business?
Well, a couple meetings ago, the Planning Director addressed the Commission and talked about the historic Commission's role in preservation for the city. And we talked about which way the Commission would like to go, if we want to just add districts or do a, kind of like a plan for the city. We've had discussions with Dr. West in the past on how his program at MTSU has been working for quite a long time, and all over the state of Tennessee, probably all over the country, and what they do for communities. And we asked him to, if he could address the Commission on what he does and how he proposes to assist the city in their preservation efforts. Mr. West is in the audience, so he could make his little presentation.
Great. Mr. West, if you would please come to the podium. We're very excited to have you here today.
Well, good afternoon now. Neighbors, because, of course, I've lived in the Historic District since it was created, in fact, spoke in favor of the Historic District when it was created by City Council 25 years ago. What, I don't have a proposal for you guys. We have a very full agenda for the next four years, to say the least, with the Civil War sesquicentennial activities going on. I'm the co-chair of the State Sesquicentennial Commission for the Civil War, so it's a busy time for us. But when Mr. Adelot, Mr. Lewis, and I sat down and talked, well, we talked about just what all is going on now in downtown Murfreesboro. Just like it's an exciting time, I think, for us in the state with, you know, all of these big anniversaries hitting us at the same time. The Civil War right now, the War of 1812 to come, the Great War in 1917, of course, has its 100-year anniversary coming up in this same decade. And there's been so much going on in the town. We talked about the Miami Street Project and how important that is, Central being a high school again for some of us who grew up here. That's, God, I never thought I would see that the day I was pushed out the door and said, you've got to go between Oakland and Riverdale next. And some of us actually went to both of those schools before they decided where we were going. And then there's that little matter of the hospital closing and what that means, and then probably that other little matter of Murfreesboro's 200th birthday coming up. So what do we want to do? And some of the ideas we knocked around that day were, again, focused on the historic core of the city. It's interesting to me when I talk to a lot of people, not only across the state, but here in town, it's just like, you live downtown, wow! You know, or, you live downtown, now how do you get there? You know, these people can have either reaction. I do think it's the real, a real asset for the town and the county, and an asset that too many of us take for granted. So, the Center for Historic Preservation, we do work on projects around the region and outside the state. We're involved in some projects now in Alabama, particularly Huntsville, and then down south in Macon County, Alabama. But this was something that we thought, okay, let's knock this around, let's talk about what some possibilities could be. And when I think of these different anniversaries, different things going on, the different composition of who's living downtown, you know, that's changed a lot since we moved there 25 years ago. The idea I came up with to just throw out there to you guys and see what you think about it would really be a sort of long-term project. It might take two years, it might take longer, but that's okay, because I think it would give us a lot of information and generate a lot of excitement that all of you can use to good stead, and the city can use for good stead, and other audiences can use it well for years to come. And what I called this that day was finding Murfreesboro's history. Now, I know that, you know, okay, we know Murfreesboro's history, we know where to find it. We go over here, across the way to the Line Ball, and go upstairs, or we go over to the county archives, or we go down to the Heritage Center. You know, what do I mean by that? Really, I mean something that would address our history in different ways. You know, the one thing I can tell you that the Center for Historic Preservation will do for Murfreesboro's bicentennial is an exhibit at the Heritage Center. We have an exhibit that will be going in in just a couple of weeks. That's about the relationship between the city and the university, and all the athletic competitions and band competitions. So whether or not you play football, or if you were in the Central High School band, we'll have that exhibit up. And that's our bridge exhibit into one where we really do want to explore Murfreesboro's beginnings. And descendants of the Lidle family has already talked to us about different pieces that they have that they would be willing to donate for. that they have, that they would be willing to donate for a, a temporary exhibit. They would take those items back, but we could have them on display in that time. But to fuel that exhibit, I would like to do something where really we sort of do an up-close and personal exploration of the town's history by taking a group of my graduate students, and again, this could be over two or three semesters, sort of depends on what we want to do, and go do a new field survey of the downtown core. This would not just be the existing historic districts, this would be a larger project area, uh, particularly thinking of Murfreesboro as it existed at the time of the beginning of the Cold War, you know, by the nineteen fifties. This is a, you know, I'm not saying that nothing since the nineteen fifties has been important in Murfreesboro, that's hardly true at all. But I do think that we've got a good core of historical memories that we could lose if we don't try to capture that period before. And I do think it embodies a lot of our historic-built environment, if we think along those lines. And, you know, the students can not only do a new inventory of all of the buildings in the historic districts, but also the older neighborhoods, you know, the one I'm thinking particularly of is the Critchlow neighborhood, and of course, I know Critchlow School's not even here, but that area of the downtown, and then as well, the Old Bradley neighborhood, which is also changing a lot and will change more during the South Manny Street project. You know, those are areas that I would just like to be able to know more about when those different homes were built. Uh, I would like for my students to be able to try to talk to residents who would want to talk to them, um, about historic photos, historic artifacts that they might have, that we could also record. And on this, this is, uh, we're building off a concept that the Civil War Sesquicentennial Commission has created with the Tennessee State Library and Archives, where they have a project that they call Looking for Tennessee's Civil War, and they have already gone into eleven counties, they're gonna go into all ninety-five, of where they invite people, "Come meet us one day at the library or local archives or some public building and share with us your historic photos, your historic documents." And they've been amazed at what people still have. It's sort of like an antique road show, but for history. You know, we're not gonna sit there and tell someone what's, something's worth, or we don't care about that part, but what do they have about Murfreesboro's history that they want to share with us? So we could digitize those documents and photographs, that would be what the property owner could get in return. We could digitize that and give them copies of them. And then, you know, that could be something of great value to them. With all of this, the field survey, the documentation, now, we can do many different things. Uh, we can organize that in a geographic information system, the GIS system, as a way of just organizing all of that information by address. Uh, we could also use that information to come up with a good city history website or webpage that could go on the city's website. And, you know, I don't think we promote Murfreesboro's history enough. And that's one way of doing that. Certainly, we can use some of that information in the exhibit at the Heritage Center. And there's probably other ways of using that information. Uh, you know, this is, again, just a preliminary idea of what we could possibly do. But, you know, I've always been proud of the relationship that the center has had with the city, as it's, uh, certainly symbolized in the Heritage Center. I'm very proud of the relationship that the university has with the city that's gone on a hundred years, you know, MTSU is a hundred years old next year. Um, and this is a good way of getting at that, and also it creates a vehicle that my students can have a real life learning experience. They're just not in the classroom, the classroom is the city thems-, itself, and they're getting out to, in, to actually know more about where they're spending either four years, well, let's just say, you know, whatever plan they're on, the four-year plan, the six-year plan, the eight-year plan, you know, whatever plan that might be, uh, they can learn more about where they have spent, you know, formative period in their, uh, own lives. So I see those different values, and that's just really where we are with the idea. We haven't done any planning, any, or setting schedules, or deciding what can be done here, done there. We just really wanted to sort of think of, "Does this have value? Would it be of value to different groups? Is it worth the effort?" Because this is not a simple effort to go back out and physically walk the historic parts of Murfreesboro. But I do think we could have some real advantages, and it could be a good way to really start to get the city itself galvanized about the, its two-hundred birthday. It's a big anniversary, I don't think we want to let it pass without trying to look carefully at our historic-built environment and all the different stories here that make up Murfreesboro's history. So that's what I have to share with y'all today. Uh, Mr. Lewis, do you think that's a fair depiction of what we talked about that day?
Yeah, I think it is. It's, I like the ideas of, uh, that you have about going, uh, you know, almost door-to-door in certain areas of the neighborhoods of town, uh, and, and just to see what they, what they have. And I bet you're right, I bet they hold a lot of artifacts with them, and that would be interesting to see what they do have and, and be able to share with us. I'd be happy to, you know, express my feelings to the planning director and see how we could work this, uh, together, uh, and, and produce something that would, would benefit Historic Commission and, uh, MTSU also and the students.
I think it's a very exciting idea, certainly any project that where you're creating a database, that database can be used any number of ways to get information out. Certainly, one of the issues that came up before our board was the idea, how well do we, is the East Main District operating, and has it been a benefit to the city? Does it need to be extended, changed? Uh, do we need to add new historic districts within our city to, uh, support the preservation movement, and what is unique about Murfreesboro? So certainly, a database is a place to start, I would think. Um, I'm, I'm very excited about it, certainly the, the findings you may come up with that would be digitized, that would be accessible to all at some point is, is an incredible, um, benefit to the city. I think it's wonderful. What other comments from the commission?
I guess my question for you, Dr. West, would be, um, how, how could the commission work with your students, or what would, what would our participation be? Have you thought about that at all?
Well, uh, we would want y'all to be as full as participants as you can be. Uh, already, uh, the chairman has brought up some points that would be good, uh, information for the students to think about and, and note as they're doing the work, you know, "How is the East Main Street District doing?" You know, "What are preservation needs? What are questions that might be out there?" Uh, you know, when you're doing that property-by-property thing, not a drive-by thing, um, you know, those are key, you can get that information, and actually, those are key questions. I want students to develop their eye on how to look at that and think about that. So that can be one way y'all can really help, is certainly let us know what are your concerns and what are your issues. The other thing that I'll invite you to do, and, uh, I know we're doing that this spring with that project at Mont Eagle Assembly, where we're doing something very similar to this for them, um, you know, you're free to come along. Again, y'all are, have a great experience on this, the students can learn from you, so if you want to become sort of part of the project team, and, you know, believe me, we can schedule things to where it fits into people's schedule, because, you know, the students would tell you, "Well, West is the hardest person in the world to schedule," so, you know, that won't be anything new for them. And again, to me, that's one of the benefits of, that's one reason I did think about this not being something we're gonna do in four months, this is something that maybe takes a while to get it done right, because, uh, I do want that type of involvement.
Paul, thank you.
Yeah, uh, Dr. West, I'm just curious, um, I, I think the proposal sounds, um, exciting, and, uh, I'm very happy that there's so many events out there to drive people's interest. And I don't wanna put you on the spot, because you told us to begin with you didn't have a proposal, but I am curious to know, in, in terms of, within a month or three, about how soon could such a process be started, given your current commitments?
My, my preference with things that we've got lined up in Alabama at Mont Eagle and some other, uh, historic structures reports, Paul, you remember those, of course, we've got some of those lined up for the spring. This is something I would really like to, uh, you know, s- spend the spring here, planning it, really thinking it through, what parts of town we're gonna target, what parts of town we're gonna target first. Let me put together our project team, let you guys decide where are good places you can intersect, and other city agencies as well, Mr. Lewis, you know, really use maybe four to five months here for good planning, and then come this summer, start some of the work with just some senior, and by that senior, I typically mean second or third-year graduate students, um, folks who can start this as internships and get some basic work underway, and then hit this hard in the fall with my fall class, and then next winter, I would have two different classes I could use. So that's where I'm thinking of it, taking, you know, like, one to two years, really sort of one and a half years. So, um, that's, that's as far as I've gone internally, as far as scheduling. We could move it up some, if that's something the city would like, I'm open to that. I'm not gonna be able to have as much hands-on if it's moved up earlier, and being a resident of Murfreesboro, being born in Murfreesboro, you know, I'd like to get my hands on this as much as possible. So, you know, some of this is my own schedule.
I understand.
I think we all recognize that this process is not something you do overnight, and it's gonna take a while to do it right. And what you've proposed sounds like you've been getting so much information, it is gonna take some time, and that kind of survey can be used in so many ways, that data, that you want to craft it well, make sure all the questions you go before these people are well-written, and, and make sure you get all the information, 'cause you probably only wanna do it once every few years.
Yeah, well, I'm sort of hoping, Chairman, that this lasts us for another generation.
Yes, yes.
And, but you're right, we want to think this through carefully, because, you know, we're really counting on property owners being such a big help to this, and we want them to be as help as much as they want to be. It's, they can, uh, if they want to meet with us and talk with us, I'm all for it, if they don't, I understand that fully. Uh, but if they do, I don't want students, or my own staff, or myself, for that matter, to say, "Well, okay, I talked to you today, well, let me come back and talk to you again and again." You know, that, that wears out everyone. I want it to where if we ask a property owner to share their time with us, you know, we get, we're done, it's a one-and-done type of meeting where we're not constantly going back and asking for more, there's nothing much more aggravating than that.
And that's something perhaps the city can advertise in the newspapers to help make the public aware of when you're coming through a certain area and what the information is that you're looking for, that we can help promote, that they are ready for your visit and have everything pulled together, they would like to share with you.
Right. That would be good.
What other comments or questions does the commission have, and Dr. West?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, if this came up while I stepped out, I apologize, but, uh, is this an effort that would require a budget? Uh, from, you know, I don't believe this body has much of a budget, and I'm not sure, I don't know if we're looking at something that has to be funded, that we can look for a source for, if this is something that just kind of gets done within, you know, your operations at this point, but, uh, seemed to have to be a, a good question. Well, uh, that day that Mr. Adalot and, uh, Mr. Lewis met with me, we talked in generality that we probably would want to look at some type of sort of cost recovery, not really, this is a town gown project in my mind, it's not something we're looking to make any money on whatsoever. Uh, but we might, you know, this is where, again, we have to think through. If we need to buy certain type of equipment, how do we do that? How do we recover that? This isn't a, a situation that will call for mileage, you know, which is good. Uh, this might be a situation where we would want something for just supplies in large part. Again, we have our own servers at the center, I'm not worried about the computer space, but if we're providing residents with a disk copy of their historic photographs or things, I could see where that's a cost that we want to recover. So this is where, again, I want to have discussions to figure out what people want, and then we can come back with that. But it's gonna be pretty nominal, whatever we come up with. Thank you.
Perhaps since we're a certified local government, we can appeal to the state for funding some limited amount, whatever, and seek a grant from them on this.
We certainly have time to prepare that and, and work with staff to do that.
What other questions or comments from the commission, or from Dr. West, if you can?
Along the lines of what Mr. Ives asked, is this a, a verbal arrangement for you to proceed, or will there be a written agreement or contract? Or what have you done elsewhere? Or is that still yet to be decided?
I would say, in my mind, that's, again, that would be what the city is most comfortable with. Uh, I always sort of liked the verbal agreement myself, in that, uh, I'm, we have a long record of fulfilling our commitments and doing our projects. But, you know, whatever the city wants or is comfortable with. I, you know-
It's gonna require, I would think, some sort of, something that says, "Please proceed."
Yeah. Well, and we want to, you know, this is the first of a series of conversations I would like to have with some of the different sort of, now, now I'd like to talk to some of the heritage groups, like the County Historical Society, and, and get them geared up and, and interested about this as well. Because this is more than just the, your purview, it's, I mean, it's the history of the city, so I want to talk to some other groups as well.
I'm just, I'm interested in having an end product that says, "This geographic area has X number of residential units."
Right.
That are, uh, this architecture that should be considered for preservation.
Right.
And that, then we study that and take it forward through the, uh, appropriate public hearings, commissions, legislative bodies, and say, "Area A should be included," or should not be, you know, some study that, that has that opportunity for the residents to consider and the legislative body to consider, and say, "We need to probably include this." And it may be multiple levels, like you just said, it could be, uh, Burton Street or something, you know? And two years is fine, I mean, I understand the timeframe to do that sort of thing, but, that's, that's what I envision as an end product, the means to get there is where you come in.
Well, you know, yeah, I think if we can do this type of, sort of finding Murfreesboro's history and this type of study where you do have everything arranged in a GIS system, you can then use that to ask exactly the types of questions that you're, you just brought up. Uh, you know, if we want to specify what different products are, I would suggest, Mr. Lewis, that we could look at a memorandum of agreement, just sort of laying out what, what's happening and who's involved and things like that, we can do. Again, we've done memorandums like that- Again, we've done memorandums like that, we can look at a contract, again, whatever the city would think is, makes them the most comfortable.
Yeah, if you're going to want to recover monies...
Right.
...as nominal as they may be, legislative body is going to have to know what that is.
Right.
I mean, I don't know what the authorities are right now, it may be $10,000, but I would think that they're going to have to have some clue as to...
I fully agree.
I don't want you to go out there and expend money and then say, "Oh, we should have done a contract or an agreement," like you just said, and, you know, "I can't, I can't cut you that check for $38.50," you know, whatever it may be. You need to protect your, what you're doing.
Of course.
Okay. Well, I like, I like, this is, I think, it's time to, to take a look at it. Is there any action that is needed from us at this point to say, "Staff, please work out an arrangement with the center?"
I'll, I'll get together with the Planning Director and, and talk it over with him, what we discussed today, and see what, you know, our next steps would be. We got a pretty good timeframe to work with, but I still like to, you know, we're still in the process of having a subcommittee review what we have, so this will go hand-in-hand with that. We're, we're working on keeping, getting our house in order, so when we go into these new areas, we know what we want. But I'll get with the Planning Director and talk it over with him and see what he suggests, because what our monies, where our monies come from is, is his department, so...
You know, even if, after the study's done, even if after that, nothing else is added to the historic zoning district, at least that information is out there for the individual homeowner to make a better choice.
Robert, can this commission count on you to be the liaison with Dr. West to let us know what, where they are? And I would love to participate when you get together, discuss how are we going to craft and pull this together, what questions might we ask those people? I would love for as many members of this commission to participate in that as possible, just so you have thoughts in your head, how you think perhaps this process would run. We would love to take advantage of that, to say, "Well, our end product is the possibility of additional historic neighborhoods," and these may be the questions you might consider asking, so that we all try to merge this into one effort that's cohesive and you get everything out of it that everybody wants. We would love to be part of that process to review the questions or participate or add, or however you want to describe that.
Sounds great.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else for Dr. West today? Commission?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. West, for being here.
It'll be a lot of work, but it'll be fun.
It'll be a great tool for this city, not only for this commission, but for the entire city and for the county, and we are very excited about it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Our next scheduled workshop, work session, I think, is December the first, and I will send you out notices, and I haven't advertised in the paper yet either, but you've all received copies of the notebook, I guess, with all the supplies in there, so we're all on the same page.
And Brent, I understand you're working on the minutes, and you'll get those out to all the, I'd like to give them all to all the commissions, so they know, you know, those who weren't there know what we talked about, know that we're all going to be reviewing, we're going to, the subcommittee is going to be reviewing all those documents and just suggesting possible tweaks or additions or changes or edits, whatever, to making them better tools for us to manage the, the district that we have. So I'm very excited, it's been a good meeting so far, I look forward to it.
That's all I have.
Paul?
I have one thing that I, since we, we already have a work session scheduled for December the first. I would like to ask you to bring with you to that session whatever information the city has right now relative to the survey and documentation for the National Registry Historic District. I'm concerned, I'm very much in favor of, of the project that Dr. West outlined, and he's thinking along the same lines that I am relative to some of the neighborhoods that I think should be inventory as part of that. I am, however, concerned about the portion of the National Register District, which is outside any historic zoning. And I'm not sure that the Historic Zoning Commission ought to wait two years to try to bring that into the historic district zone. If it is, if it meets the criteria as a historic district on the National Register Historic Places, it will certainly meet the criteria that we have for bringing it into a historic zone. There are things that we would have to do, such as write a set of guidelines for the specific area to be taken in, and I realize that there's a political process involved, and that there's probably a public awareness process that would be involved. But from my point of view, it would not be good to wait two years to start that. We, we know that area is there, we've got it mapped out. Updating the survey information is relatively easy with the GIS system. I mean, you, you can look at a picture of the property and overlay the property tax map and bring up the owner information. I mean, it's so much easier to do that now than it was in 1985 when this process started, when it was basically, "Go look it all up." So I would, I would like to suggest that, that as we're looking at, at this, that we look at the feasibility of trying to bring that portion that's already been identified and is on the National Register. That area is protected from any activity that might be licensed or funded or permitted by a federal agency, but it's not protected from anything else. And we're the only ones who can, are in a position to afford a higher level of protection to that. And since, and I will volunteer to contact Steve Rogers at the Tennessee Historical Commission and discuss the status of the survey information they have between now and that meeting, but that's just, I have that on my mind, and we can discuss it in more detail. At that point in time, I don't know whether anybody else on the commission shares that concern for that area, but we would, we would not be starting from ground zero.
I've got the surveys. You can now bring them to the, to the work session.
I think that's a great idea. And as you were saying, I was wondering, are there areas that have been dominated and rejected within the downtown area?
I'm, I'm unaware of anything that's been nominated.
And rejected, the, by the state's...
Oh. I think this, the National Register District was established prior to the time that this was a certified local government, was it not?
Oh, before CLG, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Before they were probably, before the Historic Commission.
Right, that process has changed, so they, what they would have done is gone through a process at that time of identifying contributing structures that were 50 years old or over, along with a continuity of a sense of time and place that ties those structures together, and would have noted non-contributing buildings that existed inside the district. The National Register Historic District covers the land, the streets, the entire area, not just individual properties, but it does exclude, or at least identify, properties that are non-contributing, so that if there were to be a project that would affect a non-contributing property, as long as it didn't do harm to the district, it would not be a matter that would receive any significant consideration. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Robert, if you'll bring in that survey information, that'd be great, and we can go over it in that meeting and discuss it in further detail. Is there any other items of business, Robert, for this meeting?
I don't have any more.
Great. Given up, Chair, we welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
There is.
All those in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.